was fired like you got that big ass microphone this DJI wireless microphone
oh yeah
yo
what is up everybody hello Keenan there we go okay howdy should I even say howdy y'all howdy
go ahead and with a howdy
howdy and good evening and welcome to our town hall hosted by the Texas A and M black former student network for those of you guys that are tuning in there is a link posted so that you can chat and engage with us we're doing a town hall format tonight with our very, very esteemed and special guests I have the um honor and um opportunity to moderate the conversation for you guys tonight what our format is going to be is there've been questions that have been pre submitted that I have that we will address but you'll also have the opportunity to submit your questions we're going to open by introducing and hearing for our guest my name is Erica Davis Rouse I am the president-elect of the black former student network and also the founder and chair of the Aggie Impact Gala I'm a Texas A and M graduate nineteen ninety-five and believe it or not but I am a graduate from the Journalism Department at Texas A and M and so um although that is not my official capacity with you guys tonight it is a department that is truly um near and dear to my heart so let me get us started by telling you da 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 who we have the special privilege of having with us tonight let me start off by introducing Tashara Parker she is an award-winning anchor and reporter at WFAA News Eight in Dallas if you're in Dallas you know her um she covers traffic breaking news inspirational stories she is featured as one of WFAA's preeminent voices the daybreak anchor brings experience vibrancy and authenticity capturing the attention of viewers in an engaging and informative way all the while creating loyalty and social impact she's a treasure to her station she's coined as a community-focused storyteller Tashara is the go-to source for highlighting organizations and individuals who have historically been underrepresented and even misrepresented in mainstream media as a dedicated visionary and one of Dallas's most influential voices Tashara utilizes her platform to volunteer hundreds of hours to many organizations including Boys and Girls Club of America and her beloved sorority Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated in October of twenty twenty Tashara sparked a global conversation this is true I was there I saw it happen following backlash she received for a natural bun hairstyle she wore on air praised by viewers her response achieved morality igniting a national discussion surrounding natural hair discrimination and organically evolving into the launch of her bun ministry a movement that's a rapidly budding space to celebrate educate and empower individuals on the journey and love for all things natural hair in the spirit of innovation her acclaimed original series rooted for the ABC Network affiliate WFAA was met with rave reviews for tenacious tenaciously tackling the taboo topic of black hair professionalism within the workplace so that's another conversation we need to have and amplifying this message Tashara was quickly catapulted as one of the many universal thought leaders tapped for commentary and dialogue on this ever-evolving subject with a truly dedicated following she has rating fans both on and off the air the journalist is described by viewers as someone who truly cares about people and about her community recently earning her the honor of best broadcast journalists by the Dallas Weekly with this powerful mantra lighting her path Tashara continues to carve her slate within the industry as not only a journalist but also a social innovator bringing both DFW and the best in community storytelling to the forefront thank you so much Tashara Parker for being with us tonight and I know it's past your bedtime so we're not gonna unlike church we're not gonna hold you long we're gonna get in and get out and to help us do that we also have Roland S. Martin okay this is long but I need to tell you all these things because over the course of his career he has interviewed multiple US presidents top athletes entertainers in Hollywood Roland is a journalist who has always maintained a clear sense of his calling in the world that's true many have bestowed upon him the moniker the voice of black America and he has always been consistent y'all Martin is the host and managing editor of Roland Martin Unfiltered the first daily online show in history focused on news and analysis of politics entertainment sports and culture from explicitly African-American perspective it launched on September fourth two thousand eighteen on September fourth two thousand twenty-one Martin launched the Black Star Network an OTT network that features a variety of shows focused on news culture finance wellness and history BSN is available on all the platforms Apple Android Apple and Android Television Roku Amazon Fire Xbox and Samsung pretty much any TV for the last two years Martin produces a twice daily commentary on iHeartRadio's Black Information Network heard on nearly forty stations nationwide Martin is the author of four books his latest is White Fear How the Browning of America is Making White Folks Lose Their Minds that sounds like a title to one of his books his other books are Listening to the Spirit Within Fifty Perspectives on Faith Speak Brother A Black Man's View of America and The First Black President Barack Obama's Road to the White House as originally reported by Roland S. Martin we were so proud to see you doing those interviews I have to tell you he has contributed to several others including Paradox of Loyalty and African-American Response to the War on Terrorism by Julianne Malveaux Black Woman Redefined Dispelling Miss and Discovering Fulfillment in the Age of Michelle Obama by Sophia Nelson Babish Pusner New York and Fatherhood Rising to the Ultimate Challenge by Ethan Thomas and Nick Childs Martin is a sought-after international speaker we know delivering speeches and lectures to numerous groups annually electrifying audiences with his deep understanding of history politics culture and how they all intersect he has been named four times by Ebony Magazine as one of the one hundred and fifty most influential African-Americans in the United States as well as I know he has some other awards Jack Magazine readers voted him in two thousand twelve as king of the hill in terms of those they turn to for issues that concern African-Americans Martin came uh head of the likes of Reverend Al Sharpton and oh my goodness Donna Brazil Newsone.com named him as the number one black pundit in the country and he's been named several other times you guys the Route One Hundred the annual list of influential African-Americans and has won just a slew of awards for just being himself and
I was about to say Eric just say he's that guy
what he's going to do with us and for us tonight the last thing I'll say is in December twenty twenty-one he was inducted as the youngest living member of the National Association of Black Journalists Hall of Fame woo that was a lot but you know what this is for perpetuity it's for the gram it's for the you you guys deserve your flowers I don't care we're gonna read it we're gonna say it we're gonna tell who you are all the things that you've done because it matters and you are both one of the reasons we are called here today you are both graduates of Texas A and M University Roland from the Department of Journalism Tashara from the Communications Department that's an important distinction because having that accredited esteemed Department of Journalism is why we're having this conversation tonight and so we're gonna I want you to explain Tashara um when I turn the mic over to you one of the reasons why your degree wasn't communications
yeah
and not in journalism because I think that's an important distinction to make but first I'm gonna turn this over to Roland because I want you to tell us Roland in your words for those that maybe just were under a rock and don't know what happened will you give us a timeline of what happened with Dr Kathleen McElroy
well uh appreciate it glad to be here so uh now the Kathleen Banks decided to bring back the Journalism Department uh it they had gotten rid of it and honestly they should have because two-thirds of the people who were in the department did not want to go into journalism they wanted to go into PR so that that's just understand the truth behind all of that so that's one uh and so they were negotiating different people to who's gonna run the department Kathleen McElroy ran the University of Texas uh school journalism frankly is the top program in the state Aggies don't wanna have don't wanna hear that the reality it is looking around is A and M uh even when he had a journalism department wasn't even in the top team in the state that's just a fact okay and so uh and so this it was about getting a five-year contract tenure and all of a sudden uh when they President Banks signed off on it John Chancellor John Sharp signed off on it all of a sudden when it goes to the Board of Regents all of a sudden there's a problem then this right-wing website writes this story claiming she was this this radical focus on race diversity and this this rudder group they all get involved and so what ends up happening they go from signing her to bring her to a deal having a big signing ceremony like she was a five-star athlete and she was a five-star recruit to all of a sudden going from that offer to an offer of no tenure and then knocking this thing down to uh was grossly insulting for somebody with a distinguished career working with New York Times who's also a graduate of Texas A and M and so once the Texas Tribune reported on this story it is it is this thing has gone national uh and I was one of the folks who was highly critical of it uh and I made clear that any athlete any especially any black athletes considering A and M should opt not to this university is treating Kathleen McElroy so what this says to me these white conservative Aggies who are upset with Kathleen and her career they love DEI on Saturday afternoons they love DEI on the basketball court they love DEI on the track team but all of a sudden they got a problem when you talk about diversity equity inclusion and what it says to me at the Texas Journalism Ring of Honor was in the NABJ Hall of Fame was in the SPJ Hall of Fame who has got four NWC image awards that if you have a problem with a Kathleen McElroy coming back to teach in a helmet program at A and M to build it up then you would reject my resume and let me be real clear the most prominent journalism graduate before I got to A and M was country singer Lyle Lovett and I said then you can't have a top journalism graduate and your great it is one is a country singer you want journalism folk to be to be that's to represent uh your university in your field and what it says is is that A and M with these critics Tashara to come back to teach they wouldn't welcome me to come back and if you wouldn't welcome us to come back who do you think you gonna lean on to come back teach the next generation and that's how we got to this point and so they're trying to figure out what's next uh and the bottom line is NAACP has weighed in black legislators have weighed in just lost the dean interim dean of the College of Liberal Arts and who was supportive of her as well and so this is an absolute debacle it's embarrassed Texas A and M it's embarrassed black former students but I can also tell you it is galvanized folks I've gotten calls from black former athletes black former students or athletes I've gotten calls from parents who kids are considering A and M who now reconsidering because of this shameful action by university leaders
thank you Roland Tashara when you became aware of what was happening as someone because the point that Roland is making and I know that he's traveling right now we're so grateful that he was able to join us but if you if you really didn't hear clearly what he said basically he's saying if you are a person who is working as a journalist and if you are an esteemed journalist meaning you've been awarded by peers in your industry you've been awarded by um journalism organizations that are reputable and esteemed if you're not welcome there to rebuild a program that lost its accreditation as it should have because we were not producing the type of um graduates that were working in the field of journalism journalism like we should then what what are we doing and if it's only because of the what it's what it's now seeming like the color of that's person of that person's skin what is it that we're really looking for and what do we want because we know engineers from A and M we know physicians from A and M um it was funny because I was talking to someone today today I was today years old a a black Aggie and I said yes Roland is going to we're using his platform to have this conversation Roland Martin went to A and M
oh wow
yes he did so Tashara what what was what was brought up for you when you started hearing about what was happening
yeah you know initially first of all thank you for having me and um always a pleasure to be in conversation not this type of conversation but happy to be a part of it for sure when I first heard about this it was actually a tweet from another former Aggie um not former Aggie from another Aggie that is and I saw it and I got to read in the story and it was a Texas Tribune article that Roland referenced early on talking about the botched contract with um Dr McElroy and I started reading the story and I was just like I can't believe this is something that is still happening and I knew what was going on with DEI and you know the legislation that have been passed but I was like surely surely they won't use this as you know their clutch to to not allow this this woman this um highly esteemed woman to become a part of the faculty here and so anyways when I when I first read that I I just got to a point my heart just kinda sank cuz I was like why are we still having these types of conversations you have someone that has come in with all the credentials that she needs but still the color of her skin is being used to prevent her from you know coming on board and so that was my first take you know hearing about it and so I shared it on social media and one of the things that I continue to receive as far as feedback is concerned um of course me as a black woman who posted about it was why do you guys keep going to A and M when you know what's going to happen and I mentioned this to you uh earlier Erica when we were off camera um they say it's like y'all are running to the fire wondering if you're gonna get burned and so I had to respond to that and just talk about the reason that I chose to come to A and M and by the way you mentioned this earlier uh the journalism degree uh was not a degree that was offered when I was a student there so I actually ended up graduating in twenty-ten with a communications degree um and that is an important distinction like you mentioned earlier because we did need to you know revitalize that program and so you know one of the reasons that I wanted to speak up and and say something about it is because I know that I have a platform like most of us do and we need to talk about these things we need to understand what has happened and you gotta remember that it can happen to her today but it can happen to you tomorrow and so if we don't have these conversations it's just gonna continue to be you know tossed tossed under the rug and act as if nothing uh went wrong when we clearly see what has happened
so here's my question
see Erica 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 I went to a communications high school Jack Gates High School uh in Houston we had school communications and for me I wanted people teaching me who worked in the industry
yes
my my television instructor was Mary Waits she had she was a producer in television uh the the newspaper instructor Thelma Johnson had worked in newspaper Mr Miller Ronald Miller had worked in radio so my foundation in high school were professional teachers well I had some folk at A and M who worked in the industry others who didn't it wasn't a strong program you had great people like Dr Starr you had great people uh uh other professors but but that that was one of the problems so if you're trying to rebuild a program and you want to make it program what do you do you go out and get strong journalists who are now professors who can create a strong institution in essence recruiting Kathleen McElroy was the equivalent of President Banks and Chancellor Sharp signing a five-star Texas A and M Board of Regents tell Jimbo Fisher we don't want this five-star quarterback we don't want this five-star wide receiver hell no A and M would be celebrating the hooping and hollering if we sign the number one recruit in the state you have to look at Kathleen McElroy in that guess what when a Kathleen McElroy gets hired by A and M what do star recruits do they attract other stars and so what the Board of Regents here did and what the leadership by frankly by frankly accepting this crap from the Board of Regents and this President Banks and Chancellor Sharp what they have now saying to other great folk don't come to A and M cuz we don't want talented people we don't want five stars we want substandard folks who are going to be approved by a group of of political ideologues who know nothing about journalism who can't even spell who what where when how or why and then to get talented staff talented faculty which means you're not gonna get talented students that is what they have created by this debacle
Tashara do you have anything to add to that
no I I agree I second everything that Roland just mentioned you know I just think it creates this atmosphere where you get mediocre folks applying to this program and trying to be a part of it how are you gonna revitalize something when you don't have the best in the game so I I second everything that he mentioned and we have to understand the precedent that this is setting when you're not allowing those faculty decisions to be made by the folks who should be making those decisions directly not all that outside influence
that I and I think that that is really the point right Roland that who who is actually making the decisions and even more importantly for those of us that are already black Aggies we are already black Aggies if if people stopped sending their kids to A and M today tomorrow we will still always be Aggies right um some of that we embrace some of that we um maybe distance ourselves from but it's not we're we can't go back and have revisionist history so what what is our role what do what do we do you guys have big platforms Roland I know you were calling for boycott of athletes um
yeah so so let me let me also put this in context for all of these uh simple Simon Aggies who are they've been on my timeline whining complaining well I'm gonna use five-star again I was voted by the faculty at my high school as the best student in my school I chose to go to A and M not because of the journalism department my brother was already there but because financially it was easier on my parents they have three kids in school all three of us went to A and M to be in one place I could easily go on Missouri Syracuse uh all the top schools but I chose to go to A and has benefited from my success in the field when I'm wearing the Aggie pin on the air when I'm when I was on CNN when I was and I'm wearing the Texas and LaPelo pin when I'm on CNBC and CBS and all the networks always great to see an Aggie up there so they benefited from me being a top journalism student in high school coming to A and M I didn't come there to a great program and again that's just I had some great professors there some but it wasn't a great program so they benefited from that so what they're now saying is oh so all of this great success six honorary degrees four image awards four hundred two hundred three hundred awards three halls of fame all this sort of stuff all that stuff is meaningless because some ideologues got a problem because I may have talked about and focused on race diversity and being honest about what's happening and so what what they don't understand is so why is my book called this is in the back of my book I literally predicted this my book is called White Fear How the Browning of America is Making White Folks Lose Their Minds not all white people but you are these are people who are so hell-bent and they wanna holler merit 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 but they ain't gotta say nothing about my legacy and so what they don't understand is we've already seen in that effect one professor tweeted that a person in the arch another department I forgot which department um decided decline the job because of what happened to Kathleen McElroy we just had we just had a woman in the architecture department resign her position she's gonna stay the professor but she's gonna resign her position I think as assistant to the dean because of what happened to Kathleen McElroy and what she wrote is what does this say about anybody we recruit that we might renege on the offer because a small group of critics all of a sudden open uh opened their mouths what Texas A and M has to understand is you can't all this old Aggies we we protect each other well these folks just screwed a fellow Aggie
wow
that's what they just did they just screwed a fellow Aggie so all that Aggie support Aggies is completely goes out the window because of what they just did to Kathleen McElroy so what are they actually saying are they actually saying that uh yeah we'll accept certain Aggies but if you choose to actually care about a diverse America yeah you're not welcome here and if that is gonna be the position let me be perfectly clear to the Board of Regents and President Banks and Chancellor Sharp Texas A and M is going to remain a second-rate institution and we will never be a top-tier institution if we allow individuals to accept the reality that we are we cannot recruits recruit diverse people we're gonna lose them to Texas to Florida to Oklahoma to LSU and if all of a sudden we're gonna look up and go wait a minute where all this great talent go it's because we got Aggies who got their heads stuck in the sand and they wanna remain in the nineteen fifties by the way we couldn't go to A and M in the nineteen fifties
I I I hear you loud and clear let me let me share with you guys a couple of questions that have come up and please just jump in um yeah one of the questions that I want that was sent in this is from Tashara Robinson first of all let me shout out some of the people in the chat thank y'all for your input your comments your engagement Leslie Thompson ninety-four uh Roland's brother Reginald Martin Chris Henderson ninety-one um Stefan Freeman Darren Edwards S. Patrick ninety-three thank you guys we're we're gonna be on and for at least another thirty minutes spread the word get more of your uh alumni um your classmates to join the conversation so Tashara and or Roland I know this isn't necessarily our area of expertise but I know you both have worked in this field this question says what is the difference between affirmative action and DEI either one of you wanna tackle that
I'll let
sorry go ahead
you got it
okay so here's the deal let's just be perfectly clear I'm gonna take affirmative action first there's been no greater beneficiary of affirmative action in American history than white women all you Aggies there's been no greater beneficiary affirmative action than white women
can you explain and elaborate that please
so here's a so when the nineteen sixty-four Civil Rights Act was being debated there was a racist in Virginia named Judge Smith where I am right now in Virginia who thought he was going to scuttle the Civil Rights Act by including women in the act what it did was it got more votes nineteen sixty-four Civil Rights Act gets passed what then happens President Lyndon Baines Johnson gives a speech at Howard University where he talks about the need to take affirmative action in order to remedy past discrimination Nixon he chooses not to run in sixty-eight Nixon wins Arthur Fletcher an African-American puts in place the affirmative action program in the federal government that happened under a Republican president white conservative Aggies President Richard Nixon Arthur Fletcher was the one who put it in place then you go to Title Nine Title Nine was never about sports Title Nine was about opening professional schools to women that is universities that could not they could not discriminate against women that were receiving federal dollars what happened women became doctors lawyers engineers architects because the professional schools opened who largely benefited white women so the reason you have your percentages today of of women namely white women in colleges is because of affirmative action programs when you hear MWBE that's Minority and Women Business Enterprise if you are a black woman you in the black category Latina you in Latina Latino category the W really stands for white women these are undeniable facts that cannot be refuted and so affirmative action is about creating pathways for individuals who have been historically marginalized and left out of the process and historically that has been black people Latinos Asian-Americans Native Americans and women white women affirmative action does not mean oh you're not as qualified cuz it's a whole bunch of white men who have been let into colleges who've been gotten jobs and they are not qualified at all but they got the white male hookup that's just fact as well and so you've had these attacks on affirmative action because you hear oh it's reverse racism I remember when President Bob Gates was at Texas A and M and and I was there for the news conference and he and I had the conversations And, and I was there for the news conference and he and I had the conversations. Well, all of these Aggies were like, we shouldn't use race in admissions. To Bob Gates' credit, he said, if we should not use race, then we should get rid of legacy. And if all, and I, and I was the one who questioned President George W. Bush in 2004 at the Union Journalists of Color Convention about this issue. And I said, Mr. President, if people, uh, they want to get rid of affirmative action or quotas, what about legacy? And he said, it should be based upon merit and acknowledged that he got, got into school because of his daddy. Let me tell you what happened. The next day, Harvard, Yale, and all these major schools alumni blew their phones up, wondering if they were going to get rid of legacy because of what President George W. Bush had to say in 2004. And guess what? All of these white conservatives, Rudder Association, and that little site that went after, uh, went after Kathleen McElroy. They've been applauding the Supreme Court's, uh, decision on affirmative action in college admissions. But guess what they haven't said a word about? The same Supreme Court said affirmative action, use of race in college admissions is okay for the military academies. Now wait a minute, I'm sorry, hold up. So you're saying it's bad for civilian colleges? But why is it good for the military? Cause Chief Justice Johns Roberts literally said that the military has a interest in having a diverse military. Now please explain to me how the same Supreme Court said it's cool for West Point, for the Air Force Academy, the Naval Academy, for them to maintain affirmative action, but not everybody else? And that's where we are. And the same, and I'm, I'm being very specific when I say white conservatives who are complaining of folks at A and M. Have you heard any of them say legacy should be abolished in all schools? They have not. And who is the greatest beneficiary of legacy? White Americans. Why? Because if their grandfather went to Texas, went to a university, and Texas A and M used to use legacy, that means that a white student benefited from their grandfather going to A and M. But my grandfather couldn't go to A and M, which meant that they were benefiting from a Jim Crow policy and I wasn't. But you don't hear them discussing that. I wonder why.
No, I, I hear you loud and clear. And I think this is a perfect segue to what Tashara was, um, explaining on her Instagram a couple of days ago when I saw it. Because everything you just said and the validity of everything you just said, and this is another question that we've got. But there's still this misnomer that black people accepted, or black students accepted into Texas A and M are less qualified, or, um, someone, I don't know.
Look, and I said this on my Instagram page the other day when all of this stuff, you know, first broke over the weekend. I said it, uh, earlier this week. You know, when I get that question, and I, I feel like someone has asked that question here in, in a certain way, and it was somewhere in the comments. But when you talk about black students going to A and M, everyone assumes they know the reason why, right? If you didn't play sports, why are you even going to Texas A and M University? And Roland already told you his reason why, but I was a first-generation college student. A and M was recruiting us for academics, not for sports. So they would come out to my school at inner-city Houston and recruit us from there. We didn't have a lot of other schools coming to Forest Brook Senior High School in Houston, Texas, okay? So when A and M would consistently show up and bring us to Texas A and M University, sometimes for overnight stays, you were learning about the school, you were getting ingrained in the culture. And as somebody who did not have anyone else that went to school before her, right? You know, we, we didn't have a whole lot of resources at Forest Brook. That's what we knew. And I don't regret that decision. I got a great education at Texas A and M and I was able to do a lot of things that I never, um, thought possible by attending Texas A and M University. But I think it's important to understand that when you try to group all of us together, together as, as one group of people and the reason and rationale why we chose to attend Texas A and M, I think folks need to really dig deep and understand that there are a lot of different reasons. So mine was different, Roland's was different, and I'm sure there are many others. So, um, for me, I think we need to all just come together and figure out how we can help the students that are still at Texas A and M. Somebody asked in the comments, are we asking for everyone to boycott the school? All black students to boycott the school? I'm certainly not saying that, but what I will say is I agree with Roland when it comes to athletes. If y'all trying to get five-star athletes, but you're not trying to get a five-star professor to come on over to the school and lead a program. So that's the problem for me. And I think, you know, we just need to keep having these conversations because like I said earlier, we cannot sweep this under the rug or it's just going to continue happening. It can be her today and it could be me tomorrow.
Uh, that is so poignant because I've gotten a lot of questions about the gala. Are we still going to have the gala? Are we still going to do the gala? And for those that don't know, I, I want to kind of give the background of why we even decided, um, to do a gala. Um, we have been going to A and M and begging and asking for more scholarship funds since they did away with the Presidential Achievement Award that many of us in the 90s got as funds to attend A and M, um, combined with those individual recruitment efforts that Tashara talked about, that Roland talked about. I went to a white high school. I had my heart set on going to a black, um, college, going to HBCU. I was recruited with a scholarship to Spelman. I was recruited with a scholarship to Xavier. Texas A and M, believe it or not, many of you in the comments will believe it, was really the only school that sent someone to talk to me, to meet with me. And I was top 10, but 10%, not top 10, like 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10. So for, for a student like me who wasn't an athlete, I really felt that personal touch. Plus with it being in Texas, back then it was far enough away to be far enough. Um, it's gotten a little closer with the freeways these days. And with the cost, um, I actually was able to go to A and M and graduate without a student loan with my scholarship and with what my parents paid. And they, they wanted me to come. They acted at the time that they wanted me to come there. So it wasn't a really difficult decision, even though I did have my heart set on going to an HBCU just because of the environment that I had been raised in up to that point. But when I got there, and Roland, I will tell you this, as a person who was pursuing a degree in journalism, and I probably told you this before, you're right about the staff. Yes, there was Dr. Starr, but you know who I got a lot of my mentorship and my guidance from Roland? From you. Not from the faculty necessarily at A and M. Roland was the one that told me, you need to join, um, NABJ. Oh, you need to apply for this. Um, and I don't know if it was you Roland or someone you told to do it, but someone put my name in the hat to host, uh, Ray Bowen and Friends, the television show that was aired live with the president of the university that was hosted by me, a little black girl at Texas A and M. But that wasn't happening by A and M, it was happening by people that were there, that were advocating. But those people kind of looked like me, right? So for me, going and trying to figure out and begging A and M and meeting with all these different stakeholders to get that scholarship free and stated, we were batting our heads against the wall. So myself, along with some other, um, black former students, we said, you know what? Quit asking them. We'll raise our own money. We'll give our own scholarship. And that's what we've been doing. I know we haven't raised the amount of money that was given out, um, with the PAA, but we are getting there, y'all. And so the question that I've been asked a lot is, what about the gala? Okay, we still have black students at A and M. We still got to support them.
Exactly.
We still have black faculty at A and M. We still got to support them. We still have black staff. So we can't abandon them. But here's a question that I want to pose to you guys that really, um, made me think. This is from Rodrick Lowe II. My name is Rodrick Lowe II. I'm class of 26 and I'm a Business Honors and Supply Chain Management student from Dallas, Texas. This upcoming year, I'm the president of the Multicultural Association of Business Students, MABS. The Senate, the Senate Bill 17, which bans the Office of Diversity, you guys, which is closing on September the 1st. So if you didn't know that, A and M has not wasted time in their interpretation of this, um, state bill. So we'll, we'll come back to that. Um, with, which bans the Office of Diversity and Inclusion at May's Business of School. It doesn't actually ban the office, but that's A and M's interpretation, but we'll get back to that. Will leave my organization without the faculty support it has had since its inception. In what ways can black former students and the Black Former Student Network help DEI organizations like Multicultural Association of Business Students prosper even with the legislation, legislative barriers enacted to limit our impact on campus? And chat, please also feel free to chime in on some of these questions.
Hey, real quick, I just want to clarify, um, are we for sure that the organization won't have any faculty support? Again, I know that there's a interpretation factor there of what this bill could mean for certain groups, but, um, have we clarified that yet?
I think the, um, assumption by this student is that their support must fall under the Office of Diversity and Inclusion. And with the closure of that office, where will their actual support come from? It's, it's what I'm, I'm believing that he's saying, but we'll do our best to, um, Rodrick, we'll do our best to address your question as best.
Here, here, here's the problem, here's the problem. Because of what Texas, what Greg Abbott is doing in Texas and Dan Patrick, because of what Rhonda Sanders is doing in Florida, people are scared to death because their deal, any mention of race, any sort of focus, everybody is skittish. And administrators are skittish because, oh my goodness, is this going to run afoul of the law? That's how ridiculous, uh, the law is, okay? Uh, and so that's the problem that we are now facing and dealing with because of how Republicans have acted just, just, just stupidly when it comes to this whole issue of diversity, equity, inclusion. And they're also lying. They're lying. 35 former military leaders filed an amicus brief with the Supreme Court stating how important diversity, equity, inclusion has been in diversifying the armed forces. 35 leaders. And so, and then when Rhonda Sanders was just on Jake Tapper's show saying, oh, it's failed in corporate America, another flat-out lie. The fact of the matter is, it has been affirmative action for all of its problems, has been the most successful path in, in terms of trying to, uh, provide opportunities for a diverse area of people. Now I'm about to mess some Aggies up. Tashara and Erica, y'all may not know this. Kyrie Irving, were y'all aware that Kyrie Irving, it came down to two schools that he was considering to go to college? He went to Duke. He went to Duke. Do you know what the other one was? Texas A and M. Texas A and M. Mark Turgeon was the head basketball coach. Guess who Coach Turgeon called? Listen to me clearly, all you white conservative Aggies. Guess who Texas A and M basketball coach, Mark Turgeon called to try to persuade Kyrie Irving to come to Texas A and M? Me. Kyrie wanted major in communications.
Oh.
He put, Mark Turgeon put me on the speakerphone with Kyrie and his daddy. Kyrie's daddy played basketball with a brother named Gary D. Howard. Who is Gary D. Howard? He was, uh, one, uh, in the NABJ Hall of Fame. And he was the, he was the first African-American sports editor of a major newspaper. So when they called me, Kyrie and his daddy knew who I was because of Tom Joyner Morning Show, TV1 and CNN. So if Roland Martin ain't an Aggie, Kyrie Irving and his daddy don't know who to call. Coach Gary Blair has called me and to recruit, to help recruit women to the A and M basketball team, including some of our All-Americans. Coach Kevin Sumlin asked me to help recruit. So isn't it amazing that these coaches ask this journalism graduate, ask this Hall of Famer to recruit athletes? But this is how the Board of Regents and the administration treats a highly successful A and M graduate who went on to an esteemed career in journalism. This is why they are nonsensical. And so you ask the question, what's your former students do? Former, black former students, many of your companies give to Texas A and M. You need to go to your companies and say, if this is how they're going to treat someone like me, our, our company should pull our donations to Texas A and M. If you want to understand how to impact America, America don't understand nothing but the money.
Yep.
They understand the money. They understand. And so when you pull the black athletes, you are affecting the money. And when you start telling corporate America, don't send the money to A and M, send it somewhere else, they will respond to the money. We can sit here, yell, hoop, holler, or whatever, but they understand the money. And if y'all saying, well Roland, that's a little harsh, go read Dr. King's speech on April 3rd, 1968 at Mason Temple. When, not, I have a dream part, excuse me, the mountaintop part. That's the bottom two minutes. Go read the pre-41 minutes when Dr. King said, we must redistribute the pain. He said that we must make it clear, those who do not want to do business with us, we do not do business with them. We have got to understand, and he also said that black folks must move as a collective in order to affect change. And that's how we get this institution to understand. And my last point is real simple. Texas A and M is a public institution. Erica, your parents are taxpayers. Tashara, your family are taxpayers. My mama and daddy and grandparents and aunts and uncles and brothers and sisters are taxpayers. I still own my home in, in, in the Dallas area. I'm a taxpayer. So Texas A and M is our damn school and we have a right to fight to be there because we paying for it.
Tashara?
Oh, I'm ready for the next question. I don't need to tag team on Roland.
Okay, so here's the next question, which, you know, this one kind of like, it hit me in the gut a little bit.
I do want to answer something, Erica. Um, a lot of folks are saying in the comments, how can we continue to support the students? And I don't know if we directly answered that. But I do want to say that whatever we can do, and, and Roland's brother Reginald was in the comments earlier as well, saying that we need to make sure that we continue to give our dollars to scholarships. And you know, whether it's AIG, the Black Former Students Network, to make sure that we're continuing to support those organizations that are supporting the people that look like us. Because we mentioned this early on, you know, there are still a lot of students at Texas A and M, still a lot of faculty at A and M that look like us. And the last thing that I want them to deal with is feeling like we've forgotten about them. So that's one of the points that I want to emphasize when it comes to, to scholarship dollars or when it comes to dollars and how we're putting that money back into schools.
And to the graduates, remember, we don't have to get Texas A and M's permission to help students. We don't have to get their permission. Tom Joyner and his foundation, they gave the money directly to students. So if we want, we can, we can, we can help student, we can help black students directly. And that, that don't break no laws. They can't tell you who to send your money to. So there's a way for us to do that and we need to consider that.
So, and I'm going to talk about this at the end about please engaging with the, um, Black Former Student Network. I'm actually the president-elect. I don't take over until August the 1st. But one of the things that we did with some of the funds from the gala, with the help of some campus leadership that explained to us how the scholarships work, we have now, um, a fund that is called Direct to Student Support. It's private funds given to the Black Former Student Network that we distribute to students that need help. We have paid for people's cars to, um, be fixed. Um, we have some infrastructure in place. So for example, if they say, my car's broken down, it's at the shop, we pay the, the people at the shop. We pay rent, um, we've paid for food. So, um, it's a newer initiative that the BFSN started, really, we were able to put in place last year because we had the funds to do it. But we've literally been able to keep some students, um, in school. But more than that, help them feel supported, like they have somebody that they can go to when they need money. You know, they need money. And because it's direct support, paid directly to the entity, it does not count against their scholarship. So A and M has a very interesting way that they view, um, financial pay. And if we were to give, let's just say, give a thousand dollars to a student. A and M was like, oh, you got a thousand dollar scholarship. Okay, we're going to minus that from monies you already get. So they end up neutral.
That's, 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 that's most schools. That's, that's most schools. Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
So we've been able to put some infrastructure in place to help students that have immediate needs with things that that eye-track them, um, through money that's come from all of you that we can pay to the source that they need the monies paid to. Um, so I, I did just want to say that this question, and this is really for all of us. And of course, I hold it near and dear to my heart because I'm, I'm being called out. But he says, um, this is from T. Rollins, class of 90. Where were the Aggie alumni organizations during the legislative session when 200-plus students, faculty, staff, and the NAACP Legal Defense Fund testified against the defunding and elimination of DEI programs at public universities?
First of all, first of all, they were there. They were there. But y'all got to understand something. The die was cast. The votes are there. Republicans have a supermajority. They control the Texas Senate. They control the Texas House. They control the Texas House. They control the governance management. And so I can tell you, I was dealing with the Black Caucus and they understood very well that these things were going to get passed and they could not stop them. And so that was happening. The moment Rhonda Sanders did it in Florida, then you begin to see Texas, Abbott picked it up, Kemp in Georgia and different places. So these things are happening. So if you want to talk about, see again, testifying is one thing in which I actually encourage. But let me remind people, in the last, in the twenty-twenty-two midterm, seven, listen to me clearly. Seventy-five percent of all Texans thirty and under did not vote.
Correct.
Seventy-five percent. So the greatest way to stop what is, what is happening here is for folks to mobilize and organize and vote. If seventy-five percent of young folks don't vote, you get the actions of Abbott. You get the actions of Dan Patrick. You get these things. That's what happens when we don't vote. So testify at the hearing is one thing. It's critically important. But if you didn't go to the ballot box, testify don't mean a damn thing because voting created those who in power.
It's true. It's true. To Sharra, I think you were gonna say something. I'm over here typing.
Yeah, I agree. And as Roland already mentioned, I was down there testifying, not specifically for that, but certainly for a policy that had some impact here in Texas. I would just say, you know, again, if you're not gonna do the work that comes after you go down there and testify, well, there was two hundred, three hundred, five hundred people testifying. At the end of the day, if you're, if you're not getting out there to vote, then what are we doing? So, again, I, I do think that testifying is important. I was in Austin, what, two, three times this past legislative session doing some work. But I do believe that if you're not gonna get out there and make it happen elsewhere, you know, if, if you're one of those folks that are saying, my vote don't count and all that nonsense, yada, yada, yada. Then look, you calling, trying to cause people out about not being in Austin to testify really doesn't mean a thing.
Well, y'all, we have about five minutes. To Sharra has been really clear. She's been so generous with her time. Roland is landing, just getting back in town. To Sharra has to be in full face, hair and makeup at three o'clock in the morning to go do her, her day job. Please, Sheriff, there's any last questions. While you guys do that, this is my ask. As I said, I'll be taking over the Black Former Student Network as president August the first. There will be lots of opportunities to, to join and amplify our efforts. What we're doing, hey, Shante, I just saw my co-chair Shante join the conversation. What we're doing has been a lot of work, but when you talk about money, let me tell you what helped change the tide. When we started that endowment, I think I saw Coffey and some of the others that were involved in this effort, the first year, Pamela Benson Owens. This is what the foundation said to us, and this is what I'm starting to see now. When we went to the table to have conversations, they said, oh, you know what? We're very interested in you guys because guess what? You're not, when, if you think about the time that black students started coming to A and M, you're not at your maximum wealth yet. So for most of us, the ages that we are now, now you may be a trust fund baby, whatever, praise God for that. But for the rest of us, we are just now getting probably to prime philanthropic years. Or where we're starting to have more money to give, or where we're starting to have thoughts about what we're gonna do with our estates, estate planning and all of that. And so we are at that place where they're like, oh yeah, we really want to start to hear from our black alumni because they're getting to the age where they have money and we want that money. And so the more money that we're able to raise and allocate, and for those of you guys that don't know, the scholarship that is endowed through the foundation, we only put two parameters on that scholarship. The student has to be black and they have to have a two-point-five. That's it. No other hoops to jump, no cartwheels to turn. They need to be a black student and they need to have a two-point-five. We made it as basic because when it's private funds, you can set your own criteria. So that's.
And I may, I may, I, I drop it a two-point over, go ahead.
So that's the criteria that we set and we were able to do that because the money was raised from all of you guys. I see LaChanti Solari, Angela Chapman, Jaclyn Miles, lots of you guys were donors and really helped us get their attention. Because without giving them that first hundred thousand dollars, they don't, they didn't care to talk to us. It was that first hundred thousand dollars that started the conversation and started them going, oh yeah, let's do the math. Oh, let's see, when do we start letting black people in? Okay, so, oh yeah, they're getting to the age where they're estate planning, they're giving money. So if participating through the BFSN isn't just your jam, please think about ways that you can mobilize with what we're doing. We are really turning, I think, a corner for visibility and the voice that we really haven't had in the past. And most of it is because of the donations that you guys have given and the money that we've been able to set aside to say, we're serious. The Hispanic Network has raised googobs of dollars. And I got a statistic today, so please forgive me to my real journalist on the call, I haven't fact-checked it yet. But it said that A and M is actually not technically a PWI anymore because with the Hispanic population and the other plus the, the black population, they're only at forty-nine percent actually white. I'm not sure. We need to fact-check that. But the point that I want to make about the Hispanic alumni is that they have really mobilized and they have a voice at the table. So it's gonna be interesting to see how all of this actually plays out because people think DEI is only black. No, it's not, honey. DEI is not just black. In fact, it's not just race. It's ableism and, you know, disabilities and, and gender. And there's so many things that are wrapped up in DEI. People just automatically think, ah, when they hear DEI.
And, and, and let me just. Go Roland, Sharra, you go ahead.
No, I, I said what I wanted to say. People automatically think black.
All right. So, so I wasn't gonna say this point, but you mentioned the disabled. And again, anybody disabled, thank black people because of nineteen ninety-six American with Disabilities Act that is based upon a provision of the nineteen sixty-four Civil Rights Act. Yes. So when black folks fought for the Civil Rights Act, that benefited women with Title IX and benefited disabled. And so understand what our fight has always been about. It has not always benefited just us. It's benefited everybody else. And if you gay and you, you are thankful for gay, for same-sex marriage, thank black people because that was based upon the Fourteenth Amendment, the equal protection clause. Those are historical facts. So let me say this here. You, I'm glad you mentioned the money. I have more than a million dollars in assets. Because of this, Texas A and M will not be getting a dime of my money. They need to show me that they are serious about supporting us. My company has a thirty-million-dollar valuation. I'm sure there's some white conservative Aggies who are going, oh, we've got billionaires. We've got multimillionaires. We don't care about your money. That's fine. But when I created my, I, I gave twenty-five thousand dollars and created a scholarship fund in my high school. I could have easily done that at Texas A and M, but I refused to do so because of issues like this here. And what, what President Banks had better understand, what Chancellor Sharp had better understand, and what Board Chair Bill Mahomes, a brother, had better understand, and the Board of Regents is that we can take our money elsewhere. We can go give it to Prairie View. We can go give it to Texas Southern University. We can go give it to HBCUs. Because guess what? A and M has done a horrible job in recruiting our children. My sister Levita and her husband Manassir, four kids. First one went to Seton Hall. Second one went to Baylor. Third one went to Howard. Fourth one went to Prairie View. Because A and M's recruitment was horrible. And so what they need to understand is you're not gonna create second and third generation black Aggies if this is how you treat a Kathleen McElroy. You're not gonna create an opportunity or a pathway for us to want to give if this is how you treat them. I was very clear. I was invited by a University of Miami graduate to come sit in their suite when A and M plays my, the Hurricanes in Miami. I will not be there. I removed my Texas A and M Journalism Ring of Honor Award from my set. You will not see until Texas A and M, Board of Regents, Kathleen Banks, the president, and Chancellor John Sharp, until they publicly apologize to Kathleen McElroy, reinstate her original offer, a five-year deal with tenure, even if she declines it. I will not rep this university. You do not, this is the first time since I got my Aggie ring in nineteen ninety that I have not worn it. I'm class of ninety-one. I have not worn it. I'm not playing because what you're not going to do is use me as a prop and then abuse me of folk who look like me when it suits your purpose.
I'm just, amen, amen. To Sharra, closing words?
I do want to just address, we got a lot of folks commenting and I want to make sure that you guys know we are seeing your comments. So one of the things that folks are asking for is a plan of action. So Eric, I want to call you actually back to the forefront because they want to know, we know you take the rim in August, but what are we doing from here? Roland has kind of laid out, you know, what he's doing, but what are we collectively doing to make sure that we can all keep the momentum going? Because again, we can't just have this happen and then, you know, we talk about it the week of, then maybe next week and maybe the week after that, and then it just falls off. We need to keep having these conversations so others can know that they're supported.
So thank you so much for saying that. And I think we'll, we'll, we'll close it out on this. First of all, I need all of us at the table with all of our expertise, all of our education, all of our personal experiences and insights to work together collectively. And so what it sounds like may need to happen. If you guys love this format, if you loved what we did tonight, it sounds like this is just a part A. And maybe we do a part B and then from there, and, and part B be focused more action-oriented. And maybe we can get, you know, a couple other guests, maybe some of you that can join us and take it from here. I'm so grateful to Sharra and Roland for coming on. I think this was the perfect way to let people know that we are aware, we are concerned, we are disturbed, we are disappointed. I think an apology is a amazing first ask, right? As, as just a very first ask, and I will get with Adrian Cornelius, who is our standing BFSN president right now, and have a conversation with him and Paula Harris, who's our board chair, and come up with a plan to number one, request an apology. I think that, I, I think that there's no reason why that can't be our very first plan of action. We have Aggie conversations that still happen every Tuesday. I don't know, Ken, if you all will be addressing this at all or having any plan of action from your stakeholders. I know that Ken Robinson, also Angela Chapman, I know that you guys are very well-connected with the foundation where you all may have some audience that we don't have. But we really need everybody to decide to come on board and help us really impact change. Y'all, we have staff and faculty at A and M. Some of them were our friends when they were undergrads that are very worried and concerned about their, their roles right now, about their jobs, their livelihoods. Rudder, it's, what is it? The Rudder Association?
Yeah.
Google them and look them up. Read some of the essays that they wrote. The way that they have, the word I want to use, I don't think it's appropriate for me to use. It starts with a B. But the word they, the way they have misconstrued the words of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King to their purposes. It really made my stomach hurt just to read it. There are some very small but mighty voices. And like Roland said, we may not have the, the billions of dollars, although we might. I don't know about some of y'all. But it's getting the attention. And honestly, my first question for President Banks and for our leadership, do, is, do we care or do we not care? Do we want black students at A and M or do we not? If we don't, just say that and we know.
Just say it.
If we don't, just tell us and we will come up with a plan, right? For the rest of us, for those of you that have, I know LaChanti Solari, your son will be there in the fall. Angela Chapman, I know your daughter just graduated. Jaclyn Miles, your daughter is there now. Please forgive me if I'm not calling out your child that's in attending at this time. But we've got our kids there right now. We need to know. Do you want them there or not? We love them. We care about them. We want them to be somewhere where they're wanted, valued and where they can flourish. And if it's up to us as the BFSN to make that happen, if there's other ideas you have about how we can continue to support and love on those students right now that need us more than ever, I for one am open to hearing that. And that is a priority for me and the organization as we go into the fall. So the gala will still be happening because we are there for our alumni and we're still gonna celebrate them. We're still gonna remind A and M that we have some of very esteemed people that have graduated from A and M that we find, even if they haven't gotten a distinguished alumni award, we know that they are distinguished and worthy. We're still gonna celebrate those folks. We're still gonna encourage and love on our current students. That's not gonna stop because that's what we're called to do. Now, as it comes to prospective students, I think that's another conversation that we need to have. Thank you for your comments, you guys. Go to the.
Hey, Erica, Erica, next week, I'm gonna be hosting a Zoom with former student athletes. If you're one of them, if you want to be on it, they reached out to me after they saw my commentary. So just send me an email. That's my name, Roland@Rolansmartin.com. Roland@Rolansmartin.com. And folks can hit me up. If you're a former athlete, if you want to be on that Zoom call, let me know. Because they are former athletes, they're African-Americans who are former athletes who are pissed off as well. And they are also rare to speak out and we are mobilizing and organizing them as well. And so to A and M, I know y'all watching. I know the administration, y'all watching. Do understand. I know this mobilization, organization game. I've sat the feet of some of the top civil rights leaders in the country. And don't think for a second that we're going away. We gonna bring this heat and it's gonna stay on y'all. And do understand, we gonna keep putting your faces out. We gonna keep putting your names out. And as my man, as, and my girl said in color purple, until you do right by us, y'all gonna have a black Aggie problem.
And with that, I love every one of y'all. I love you guys. I am, you guys are each so near and dear to me. I appreciate you for tuning in this evening. This will be available on Roland's YouTube. So for anyone who is not able to catch it live, thank you Roland for giving us this platform. Please make sure you share the link with them. Send it, send them to his YouTube. Subscribe. Follow Tashara Parker on Instagram. I'm Erica Rouse. I don't know if there's anything inside on my Instagram, but if you want to follow me, please do. And you guys, please be safe and have a good night. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.